Okay, it is six minutes after. I would like to call this meeting to order. If you are here to present a case, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, make your presentation. We may ask you questions for clarity or for more information. A simple majority vote of the members present will decide your request. If you are here to speak in the public comment phase of the meeting, please also come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, direct your comments to the commission. We have no time limit, but brevity is appreciated. Let's begin with a roll call.
Mr. President.
Here.
Nash.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Hanley.
Here.
Bryant. Nightingale. Zawurko. We do not have a quorum.
We do not have a quorum, so we're going to proceed with discussion. We will not be able to take a vote on anything here tonight, but hopefully we'll make some progress.
I think this will be, this discussion will be reflected in the minutes, correct?
Yeah, anything that any of the audience wants to say will be reflected in the minutes and brought up at the next meeting.
First item on our agenda is the approval of our previous meeting, which was May 23rd. Since we did not have a June meeting.
Can we approve minutes if we don't have a quorum?
No. So we hold those also. Well, the items, the two items on our agenda tonight were both public hearings, so we will simply entertain comments for the record as anyone wishes to speak on either one of the two.
Let me just give a little background. The closing of the 500 block of South Fayette was requested by Old Town Christian Outreach. They had purchased all of the property on the east side of that block of South Fayette. They get all of their intake of all of their clothing, appliances, and everything at their Harrison building, but they said that that building is totally full and they wanted to move their appliances and furniture over to the east side of that block of South Fayette. They said that back in, when people back up to pick up appliances, they're, they're blocking part of Fayette and for a safety reason, they wanted to close that block. Also, I guess there are food giveaways on Saturday. They have people lined up on that block. So that's the reason that they, they were requesting that. And then in the minutes, I think, you see, we had quite a discussion about that two months ago. But that's a reason that it came before you and that's a reason that it's coming back today.
Good evening, members of the planning commission.
Mr. President.
The Chair. My name is John Millen. I live at 508 West Remington. I am not here this evening in an official capacity as a member of the city council. I speak as a private citizen. And I'm here to oppose this closure on Fayette. I, I think the traffic situation in that area encompasses more than one property owner. It is a business district. That block of Fayette serves as a connector between Grashit, Mackinac, and north to the Rosian Towers, which is a city Saginaw Housing Commission building. It is the secondary access to that building. The front entrance is considered to come off Harrison Street, but it is the primary delivery street for a number of businesses in that area. And due to closure of Fayette Street farther north for the county courthouse complex, it would create a little two-block section of Fayette Street unconnected to any further north-south traffic. In particular, there has been a change in the possibilities for traffic in that area with the proposed new jail, which would require a closure of north or south Harrison in the 200 and perhaps even 300 block, depending on final plans. At a minimum, that area would be, have enclosures during construction, but the current plan for the jail places the footprint over and on top of Harrison Street. So to close this block now and in the near future need to close Harrison would create a severe traffic difficulty and affect the businesses and residents there. Using the standard of this property owner owning both sides of the street, they might easily be back to you to want to close the 500 block of South Harrison where the same situation exists. And that is, at its margins, become, starts to become a residential area and you've closed off two streets then and created a three-block long super block if they were to ask that. So I, I think at the moment, this, this closure should not be approved at, at a minimum pending future developments with the jail project. But I think on, on its own merits, even without the jail project, it is not a plus for the general traffic situation in that area. It could be as simple as this may not have been the, the right choice for them to expand their campus if it's going to end up restricting other traffic. So I understand safety concerns. I have seen the number of people that come for the food giveaway, but that may simply need to be handled a different way than to begin closing streets off on a permanent basis for a monthly activity. So I, I would ask that those points be looked at carefully by the commissioners and to the degree the staff has reported the, the facts there, assess those facts. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for having me. My name is Bill Fetterspiel. I am the sheriff of Saginaw County, resident of Bridgeport Township, 4824 Baker Road. I appreciate the opportunity tonight to come and speak with you about the closures of Fayette, the possibility of that closure. And I did make a presentation to the city council last night due to a decision that was made by the Saginaw County Board of Commissioners last month at their June meeting. Some of you may be aware that the county commission has been working on trying to get a new jail built in Saginaw. We're in dire need of a new facility, and I don't want to get into all of the details, but of course I would entertain any questions you may have on regards to the needs that we currently have. Decision was made to build a new facility, and the decision was made that it would be close to the courthouse so that we could continue with our operations of transporting prisoners from the jail to the courthouse without bringing them outside the building. We transport them currently from the basement of the jail through a tunnel that is underground, deep underground, and it goes to the basement of the courthouse where we have special elevators that transport prisoners up to the second, third, and fourth floors so that if inmates and defendants have to have a trial, we take them over safely, safe for the public, safe for everyone else, and they never have to be outside for risk of escape. With that in mind, there were other proposals on the board for possibilities of a renovation of a building. One scenario was using the old TRW, I believe it was a transmission plant on East Genesee. That was met with skepticism and ultimately was denied. The other option was to have a jail built in the parking lot to the east of the current jail, in the metered lot between the jail and the Baptist Church on Michigan. That lot that the county owns is not big enough for the facility, which will be a four-story or four-and-a-half-story facility and 86,000 square feet. So the next logical location would be to the west of the jail. The jail currently sits at 208 South Harrison Street between Adams and Cass. The sheriff's headquarters building is also there. The proposed new jail will be built, we're asking that Harrison Street be closed so that the jail could actually be built starting on the sidewalk on the east side of Harrison Street, right in front of the current jail, and it would extend to the west just before the attorney's office at Webster and Adams. And it would be between Cass and Adams, right on Harrison Street. The reason for that, and it was, it was asked last night by the mayor, why not move it over into the parking lot further to the south of that attorney's office where we could accommodate the entire building? And the reason that the commission decided to place it on Harrison Street is because of the tunnel. We need to do some excavation and create another tunnel that will tie into the very end of the current tunnel. And tunnel space is expensive, so another 200 or 300 feet of tunnel space would have probably priced us out of the bond issue, and that is how we decided to move forward. I informed my commissioners I was not in favor of increasing taxes. I did not want to millage, although that was the first option. So we had to go back to the drawing board, and I told them if we get a bond issue for less than 30 years for a $35.8 million project, I would reduce my staff by 20 in the jail, thereby saving nearly $2.2 million, which would allow for us to make the annual bond payment. So it will not raise taxes. It will be close to the courthouse and will allow us to have a tunnel. So again, speaking primarily about that, but as Mr. Millen stated, the Fayette Street is an important street for the county building, for the Rosian Towers. Harrison Street is as well. Our plans are not to go into the 300 block, but to stop right at the northern corner of Harrison and Cass so that should fire apparatus or police personnel need to come from Grashit down Harrison Street, they could still come right in front of Rosian Towers, they could still come in front of the headquarters, current headquarters building of the sheriff's office and 911 and still use Fayette and Michigan, so there would be the three. They are important corridors, obviously, and we've put a lot of thought into the Harrison Street closure possibility, knowing that the current jail would become a parking lot for employees and public for the courthouse. So we'll be taking portion of the parking lot from across the street from the jail where the new jail will be, and then turning the current jail into parking space. So ultimately, you would be able to come down Harrison Street from court and still access the courthouse and the sheriff's office. You could still come into Harrison Street from Michigan down Cass and still have access to the sheriff's office in the Rosian Towers, and you could still access the jail and the headquarters building from Grashit coming down Harrison or Webster. So although that one block area would cause some traffic shift, most of the traffic is there in that particular area for courthouse business. The judges use the parking lot and the employees and the elected officials directly behind the courthouse. And of course, many people utilize that street to park in front of the jail when dropping off payments or visiting individuals. So again, they would normally come in Cass Street, turn right onto Harrison Street, usually park in front of the building. They could still come in Cass Street from Michigan and just continue straight across where Harrison is and go into the parking lot to make their visit. So I know I was not on the agenda to talk to you about the closure of Harrison Street, but I bring it up tonight so that, that the next meeting that you have, I would be able to put it on the agenda with diagrams and with an official request. But knowing that you had a meeting tonight, I thought it was important that I bring it to your attention since you are considering the closure of Fayette between Mackinac and Grashit. So that's the, the information that I wanted to pass along. Yes, sir.
Question. Excuse me. I thought when you started, you were talking about the new building being in addition to the existing building, but then it sounded like that was not the case.
And we're going to build a new jail in headquarters building, and we propose that it be on Harrison Street. And I wish I would have brought my, my PowerPoint that I brought to the council so I could show you, but.
Is the existing building?
It will be torn down.
Oh, okay.
We, we have to build the.
That's going to become parking lot?
It will, yes, sir. We'll, we'll wait until the new building is complete, move all of the inmates and employees over, and then demolish the current structure.
So the building is going to become a parking lot, and the parking lot is going to become a building?
Correct. Yes, sir. The parking lot and street are going to become a building, so. And we will also use part of Harrison Street from the north for deliveries to the jail for food services and laundry services. So a partial cutout of Harrison Street will probably remain open for deliveries only, but it will not be a through street. I know it's hard to picture that.
It doesn't seem like using the width of Harrison Street adds that much capacity to the new building.
No, it, it really doesn't when you think of it that way. If you can picture directly in front of the jail across the street, the parking lot across the street, three-quarters of it extends all the way to Webster and from Adams down to Van Buren. But we are missing a corner, the corner of Webster and Adams, where a current attorney's office sits. That's why we need the street. If we moved it south of that attorney's office, we could utilize the entire parking lot to not close Harrison Street, but it would add such an expense of moving it to build the tunnel even further underground that it might price us out of our bond issue. Yeah.
A other question. I'm not clear as to why this one block of closing this, vacating this one block of South Fayette is such a critical component to the building of the new jail. What kind of traffic is going to be directed because of the jail to that one block of Fayette?
I personally don't know that our operations will affect it. I was more concerned with fire services to Rosian Towers. So the question I think would be asked appropriately to Chief Van Leeu of the City Fire Department. From a law enforcement perspective, it will not affect our delivery systems at the sheriff's office. Those who are leaving, coming and going from the jail or from the courthouse will still be able to park in the lot that is currently on Harrison Street or where the jail is, and the law enforcement will be able to exit either out onto Harrison Street to the south or to the north, out of the Sally Port or back to Webster on Adams Street. So from a law enforcement perspective, I would say it's not going to be that big of an issue for us, but I know that you're contemplating closing that. If you did close it effectively from a law enforcement perspective, from my perspective, it would not affect our operations, but I would yield to any fire situation, and I'm not sure how their responses would be. But for law enforcement, I don't think it would be as much of an issue. I would be more concerned if the one-block area of South Harrison between Mackinac and Grashit were closed. That would be, that would be problematic, but there's still a nice thoroughfare to, to the headquarters building, the jail, the Rosian Towers on the main street of Harrison, which is a good street, and it will still accommodate fire personnel getting to our jail if need be.
At this point, has the county commission approved the final plan?
They have.
All this discussion anyway, we can't do anything.
I know. Yeah, no, I, I just wanted you to know, and again, I, I don't want it to appear that the county is making decisions for our planning commission. The county sent me to represent. Quite frankly, we've been discussing the jail for two and a half years, and it came together pretty quick as we were looking at rising interest rates, rising labor costs, and a need to get it done in a timely fashion while we still could afford it. So the decision was made knowing that we must still get approval from this board and the city council to close that street. But again, from a county perspective, as opposed to a city resident perspective, we believe that the services that need to be delivered and the, for people to get through there on our portion of it, that Fayette for our purposes won't necessarily create havoc for us. Again, I can't speak for fire and how they do that, but for us, we rarely use Fayette Street because we're constantly coming down Harrison Street, Cass, and Court Street, so.
That would be another vacation, right?
Yes, in fact, this morning I got a request to send a petition to the architect to be able to vacate.
Vacate, yes, I know it may spend the two vacations in the same area.
And all property on both sides are owned by Saginaw County, so it'll be one signature that'll come back. So that will probably come to you. If, if I receive it in the next week or so, I'll have time to get a notice in the paper. And so it could come to you next month.
I think something that we should look at in the long run is how many feet, when you vacate a street, people have to be notified? What is it, about 300?
The ordinance says you don't. You put an ad in the newspaper and, and that's it. And then the people who live on the block to be vacated, all of them must sign the petition.
And we, there's only, I think, four or five residential structures in the 400 block of Harrison Street between Grashit and Court Street. They're the only residential ones between Van Buren and Mackinac, just a few houses there.
I believe at our last meeting, it was said that Harrison was pretty much the emergency route, and the one thing to consider is all of that property in that area is zone R1. So any traffic going through there actually should be routed more towards Michigan or Harrison, the, the main streets. Closing that block from, from the map that I gave you there, it will make it harder to get to Court Street, but Fayette already ends at Cass, and if Harrison does, that's where that would end as well.
But I would like to see, we really do have a quorum. I would like to see what the police and fire have to say also.
Well, I was about to add, do we need to hear from the fire department?
I'll, I'll make a call and see if I can get something in writing.
How about, how about the traffic department? How much traffic is there on there?
On Fayette, they did a study, about 500 cars a day, which they said was minimal. So that was done within the last three months.
That doesn't.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Speaking partly as a city council person this time, my understanding of our procedures is once this commission has taken its action and it is sent to the city council, there is a step in there that's called the traffic committee, where the chief of police representative and the fire chief's representative do look at how any street closure affects their planning or their operations. I'm not sure if there may be a third party also, just Public Works might be part of the traffic committee.
If I have a, I think on a rational, looking at rational way, it should be the other way around.
It possibly could be, but that is my understanding of our procedures at this time.
I'm not saying anything, I just say it should be written.
Right.
We have that first before we go to the next one.
But Mike, in his capacity, representing the manager and other city people, he can certainly request comment to be presented to you before.
Definitely you need comments.
Can the traffic department ever give us any thoughts about not only the number of vehicles, but type, so we have some idea of?
Not that I'm aware of.
What kind of traffic?
I think, I think they just do the, the math, crosses that street, crosses their cable on the street.
They may have some capacity, I don't know for sure, but they bought some new computerized traffic counters, and sometimes simply by how quickly the axles hit, they know if it's a commercial vehicle or not. But I don't know if they track that.
You still may have sent commercial going to the drugstore.
Now technically, a lot of the commercial trucks are by state law not allowed on those streets.
True. Multi-axle. That was my only other comment that.
But before you go, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I know that traffic counts are important. I also ask that you keep in mind that when prisoners are released from the Saginaw County Jail, they are released out onto Harrison Street. And we book 10,000 people a year through that jail. It holds 513, so there's a lot of people coming and going all the time to the jail, which would then be diverted into our parking lot from Harrison Street. So I would ask that you keep that in mind as well, that the number of cars that are coming down there are coming for visitation and picking up their friends and family and loved ones from the jail because there are so many people booked throughout the year.
Are you suggesting that is an argument for not approving?
No, for approving. That, that the 500 count may not be a 500 daily count if the jail entrance and exit was not there. If the jail entrance and exit wasn't there, it may be so low that it would be totally negligible, that that count is higher, if you will, even though it's not extremely high, but that I believe it's higher because of the jail, which would then be located in the southern portion of the parking lot.
The exit on the new building will be on Harrison?
The exit of the new building will actually be in the parking lot if you were to come up Harrison Street from Grashit towards Cass. It will be closed right there at Cass. You would turn left into our parking lot instead of continuing straight on Harrison to pick up the prisoner. You would turn left into our parking lot and exit out onto Webster, or come back out onto Harrison Street. Webster. Or, or if they pick someone up, they could actually turn around and come right back out onto Harrison and, and Cass, go to Michigan or go back to Grashit. So I think that by diverting, it would, I believe that the counts for that road are actually high because of the jail, and without the jail there, they would be negligible outside of employees. Because nearly 350 people work at the county and they all park across the street from the jail, which counts for that 500 as well. So just food for thought. Thank you.
Any further comments on this case?
I think when we have a full quorum, this conversation should be very interesting.
Just so you know, I think what I'm going to try to do for the members that weren't here, all the members, I think I'll try to get them a thumb drive of a video presentation so they can hear every word you guys said.
I have a, Mike, you're going to get comments from police, fire, and public services first? Police and fire?
Yeah, at least police and fire.
Can we add public services just from the traffic engineer or engineering? Get their comments about it?
Okay, well, they, I don't, they may have put those comments in writing. I'll see if I've got them or not about the 500 cars a day.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, then we will hold that for next time, hopefully, when we will have a quorum. So the next case is recommendation to rezone the southwest side of 1800 block East Genesee. So again, we can discuss this.
Okay, let me just tell you what the reason that it came about. Steve, Steve Brinley bought the property where JoJo's Chicken was at the corner of Genesee in Remington. He has requested that that property be rezoned from B1 to B2. The reason for that is his idea for that lot is a used car lot. B1 does not allow the used car lots, B2 does. So he made, I said, well, we're not going to just rezone one lot, even though the, the property to the south is already zone B2, we usually do that one block at a time. So he got petitions from everyone on that west side of, southwest side of East Genesee that was along Genesee, and they all said that they would, they would not mind it being rezoned to B2. So he brought the petition in, filed it with the clerk's office, and there was a notice in the paper about it, and that it was coming for public hearing tonight. There was some concern because in 2008, there was. There was some concern because in 2008, there was a study done, it was called the Holland Remington Corridor Study. And people who remembered it said, well, I thought it was supposed to be more small residential, I mean, small commercial, less industrial. So I got the study out and I read part of it, and actually, one of the things that they said was needed in that area were more car dealerships. They said that there was an underused area, that it was at least a 10-minute drive to any car dealership from that location. And so they thought that that was one of the things that could go into that area. Now, one thing to keep in mind is if this rezoning does make it through council and with your recommendation, Mr. Brinley will have to come to the Planning Commission with a site plan so that we can look at that as far as landscaping goes, so that it's not just a haphazard used car lot, that we can deal with the design of it as well.
So where does it turn to, when you go to the south? Where's the B2 start?
B2 runs the block to the south.
The whole block to the south?
Yes.
Okay, so you've got an oil change place, then you have, then at the next corner, you have a gas station, then you got a muffler place, so it doesn't make any sense not to do it. And plus, that lower JoJo's was his right now. That was a gas station.
That's before my time. I remember several restaurants.
There was a Shell gas station at that corner. Way back in early 70s, I'd say.
In your comments, Mike, you raised the issue of other possible uses?
There are a few.
Included in B2? Can you talk about that?
Some more of, B1 is just local business. B2 would be more general business, so larger type of stores. I don't have the list with me. For the next meeting, I can get that for you, though.
What year was the building a question built?
I don't know.
Because I was sure for the church's chicken. That would have been back, 1980.
Yeah, well, maybe in the 80s?
No, 1980s. It was before, it was before 83. And I think they tore down the gas station and put the foot back there. And put a positive. Only reason I got good memory, that's my old book. So I know that area well.
But because that is one of the entrances through the city, you know, being 46 and also coming off of 75, just a mile or so down, we want that to be something that looks nice. And I guess if a used car lot was done right, it could look nice. It would definitely look better than a vacant building. That would also give the person next door, where there was a dollar store, the last people in there, that would give them a few more options as well, as far as types of businesses that they could put in there. That building is vacant now as well.
There used to be some really nice big houses on that block. Long mansion on that block. Until about 1970, to the gas station.
Any further discussion? So we will be holding up also for our August meeting, maybe?
And also next month, I know you will have an alley vacation that you looked at before, Stanley and Salt Streets, between Holmes and Stanley and off of Salt. Most of that, or a lot of that alley is already vacated, and this is to vacate another 100 feet of that. And if we get the petition back for Harrison Street, that may also be on the agenda, if I get it back in time to put the notice in the paper.
I kind of wish we would have known what the county was doing ahead of time, you know what I mean? But that's just the way it is.
Last night was the first that I, or this morning was the first that I had heard that they had finalized the plan enough to move forward with it.
Well, we don't have the newspaper we used to have.
So as you can see, we definitely need some more board members.
We do.
I don't know if the city could do anything because my, I know that all of my boards that I have need additional members, and I hear that that's true of almost every board in the city.
We made a point at the last council meeting, two council meetings ago, all council members were presented with a list of board and commission vacancies. I made the point to mention, this is how people can get involved in their community without having to run for office, work for the city. This kind of thing is a good thing.
Would it be at all worthwhile, in your opinion, for one of us to come to a council meeting and simply make a short pitch and actually talk about what the planning commission does?
I think it would be for this reason, you end up on SGTV then. And at a minimum, that, people watch that webcast. I have a friend in Massachusetts who occasionally watches Saginaw TV on the web. So I don't have numbers as to how that works, but...
I had a friend in Costa Rica call me and say, I saw you on TV.
So it would put you on the record and the video since...
Worth doing.
Yeah, and it's archived. People can go back and look at the meeting, you're still there.
But I don't know if the city could put a notice in the paper or somewhere too, because, you know, as you talk to people, you guys know how much time you spend, and it's mostly once a month for a couple of hours. And if you go out and look at everything ahead of time, you may spend three or four hours a month, but that's not a long time to ask people. I mean, you know, I definitely appreciate all of your service and the time that you spend.
Does the city have a Facebook page?
Yes.
Has it been posted there?
I doubt it, but I think so.
Should it be posted? Get it on Facebook, that you're looking for, I mean, if you care.
You might also want to talk to the city manager. Remember, the next thing we will mail up to people that there could be an insert will be a rubbish bill. Comes out in October, is due by whenever. Water bill's the one that comes in an envelope, so can't insert anything, but if we wanted to make a concerted push, that would be a place a small, it could be in an envelope.
I think, yeah. Any kind of media, or you can get some kind of...
All types.
Get some TV exposure or something. How about the neighborhood associations, aren't there? Yeah, there's a bunch of neighborhood associations, too.
And a way to hit some of those will be, it's probably a little too soon for you right now. Every month, we have what's called a citywide meeting. It's like the fourth Thursday of the month. So we've got one coming up this Thursday. Those are run through the police chief, and he could put anyone, and he had this committee or any of the commissions, on his agenda to speak about serving the city boards and commissions. And those get good attendance from all the neighborhood associations.
That might be, that is, that's probably a good avenue for that.
When is that?
The citywide meeting, I believe it's fourth Thursdays of the month. I'd have to check.
I like that.
I like that a lot.
That sounds about right, because when I come to the historic district meeting, I believe some of the inspectors have gone into that meeting.
And that all, the police chief Ruth's office, so he could place you on there. We've had people make presentations from traffic engineering. The fire department is there every citywide meeting, trying to remember some of the other...
Are those meetings here?
They move around. Each neighborhood association hosts one citywide meeting during the year.
Quick figures?
Just in my opinion, it seems like cities, one of city staff should do it, or even one of your city council people should do it. If you're already representing and say, this is what we do.
That could be.
Because, I mean, even the mayor should do it, mayor pro town. I think you'd get more bang for your buck instead of one of us being there presenting.
I know when I go to the Old Town meetings, I bring it up several times a year, and the same with downtown Saginaw Association. But a lot of those people are very involved in their own disputes.
We could get desperate and do what they do in the business world. We could raid other commissions. Go to their meetings, steal one of their members.
Well, we have two vacancies here. I have one on the historic district commission, and we need two alternates on the zoning board.
Okay, do we have anything else to come before this?
This is a discussion.
Discussion group. No, we don't. Well, then, I'm going to say it. We are done.